I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Education of St. Mary's County to order for Thursday, July 23rd, 2015. First on the agenda is, I would like a motion to move into executive session.
I move the board enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining, or legal, property acquisition issues, and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code Article, Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. All right, patrol. Ready?
Wait, let me make sure.
All right, ready. I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Thursday, July 23rd. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I'd like to have approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next up, board reports. Ms. Sarita?
Yeah. I'm going to... So this July 7th through 9th, I attended the NACO Annual Conference. And I presented the Drug Summit in a poster presentation. And so here is the poster. So this is the poster that I had hanging up for people to walk around and ask me questions about the information. Here's some pictures. So this is me and another intern from the Health Department, and then this is me with my poster in the section. And so from this poster session where people walked around and asked me questions about the Drug Summit, I learned that having an event planned by students for their peers is generally a new idea, or if not a new idea, something that hasn't traditionally been done, that people haven't been able to do. And so people were impressed by the work done by the students to plan and run this People were very, I had the fact sheet as a handout, and people were very interested in that, as that was also done by students. And so in collecting contact information, I was able to send some of those materials, as well as other logistical information from the summit, to other people if they're interested in having a similar type of event, or just the infographic itself. From the conference, I also took away that, based on the national trends, to keep leading efforts aimed at students before they even reach high school. So I don't know if you can see very clearly on the poster, but something that really pointed out was how the interest was very, even was greater even in the eighth grade levels as opposed to even high school levels. And so to continue this education even as younger, even as young as middle school, it may seem, oh, that, it may seem that the population isn't interested, but people are, especially in eighth grade, maybe the transition year. Other things from the conference that I took away are from the sessions that were held that I attended. So the first one that I wanted to highlight was the session about electronic cigarettes and the health concern with the increasing use of electronic cigarettes, or e-cigarettes, and vaporizers. And so this is another example of how the lack of education can lead to misuse of a potentially dangerous act. And so people don't know what is in these electronic cigarettes, and then lead to think that they may not be as dangerous. And something that's interesting to learn about is that teens who smoke e-cigarettes are more likely to smoke real cigarettes. And so you don't want electronic cigarettes to turn into the gateway for something, such cigarettes that so much effort has gone into decreasing that over the past years. The other session that I attended was the call to action on the opioid, excuse me, opioid crisis. And in the session, they also talked about the stigma associated with addiction, and so how addiction is not a moral failure, but a medical condition. And there aren't other diseases in which being treated is based on compliance to follow that treatment post-receiving treatment. And so, for example, if someone is having a heart attack, nobody thinks twice about treating, even if the heart attack has occurred because of lifestyle choices freely made by that individual previously. And so why is this mindset different with addiction? And something else that was highlighted is that we need to change that culture of addiction from criminal to medical. Should I just leave these out?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sarita, I will have to add on. We were at a softball tournament up in Hartford County, and some of the girls that we met there found out we were from St. Mary's County, and they had heard about the Drug Summit. So they were high school students, so they were very interested in it.
That's me, too.
Okay. So, all right, sorry, go ahead, Mrs. Crosby.
Summer's my time to play with my grandchildren. So I had them over, and two of them spent two nights, and I'm exhausted. And one of them would like to have spent two nights. We watch television quite a bit. Other than that, I would say that I'm going see Ellen tomorrow, and that's it.
Okay. And Mrs. Weaver?
Okay. I went with Ms. Allen, not this past week, week before, up to Annapolis, to the MABE Resolution Committee meeting. And they review edit policies that are submitted by different county boards. And then this information is put into different policy documents, or whatever. And then when legislation meets in Annapolis, this is what the Maryland Association of Board of Education, their stance on different issues, and how it's presented then to the delegates and senators, to ensure that our voice is heard. So it was very interesting.
All right, I've been attending a variety of meetings here at our great school system here on Mocley Street. And then in addition to that, we've been playing tourist with my children in Washington, DC. So yesterday, we were very fortunate to have a guided tour of the US Capitol, so they enjoyed that. Did our Smithsonian run, which I could not pull my seven-year-old son out of the bug area of the Smithsonian, which ironically was underwritten by Orkin. But anyway, we had a great time and just enjoying summer before school starts in under 30 days. Da-da-da-dum. Go ahead, Mrs. Washington, your turn.
I have attended two meetings in Annapolis. One, the MABE Maryland Association of Boards of Education Nominating Committee, and the Maryland Associate Boards of Education Outstanding School Board Member nomination. The first one, the nominating committee, names are submitted to us for approval for membership to be on the MABE Board of Directors. And those names will be forwarded to the committee to vote on at our fall conference. Also, the MABE Outstanding School Board Member nominations were submitted to the committee for the Outstanding School Board Member, and this person will be recognized at our, at the national conference, um, excuse me, state conference. Ms. Allen and I are on that committee. So I look forward to our fall conference in October, the end of September, 1st of October, in Ocean City, where we will have a new Board of Directors members, and our Outstanding School Board Member for the State of Maryland. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen? I've been to three meetings at MABE, as you've heard the first two, and also was recently at a MABE Board of Directors meeting. So it's, I think, very important for us to be involved in the work at MABE, not only on the receiving end, but the giving end as well, so.
That's all. Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much. I have been also doing meetings and interviews and second interviews, and going out and taking a look at the schools and the progress that's being made at the schools as they're preparing for the opening, which is coming very soon. You'd be happy to know, actually, Ms. Bailey, that if bugs are your, are your son's thing, the Summer Lunch and Learn Program, a great deal of it is embedded around reading, and the theme for this is bugs, it's insects. So all the kids are reading about insects on their different varying levels, and so I went down, I was down there yesterday with Ms. Montgomery, and we, I've never seen so many books on bugs. And so many kids engaged in learning about insects, and it's fascinating, fascinating.
We should field trip them to the Smithsonian.
Absolutely. This week, I did, on Monday, on Tuesday, pardon me, attend the Commission of St. Mary's County, the tribute ceremony for Elaine Kramer, memorialized on a plaque in a lovely garden right next to the County Commissioners Meeting. It was really, it was, it was very touching, the presentation that had been done by the Public Information Officer and the staff over there, really, really spoke to an exceptional woman who truly contributed to St. Mary's County and St. Mary's County Public Schools as well, so. Upcoming dates, boy, you've said it, next week, Monday, July 27th, next week, our 11-month employees come back. So as you come to our schools, you'll see that we have secretaries returning, and assistant principals returning, and 11-month staff is returning. Wednesday, August 5th through the 7th, we have new teacher early bird sessions, so we do special things for our teachers to come in and become familiarized with the systems that we're using. We do model demonstrations of classroom and learning, and things such as that. And then right after that, well, right after that, we have, technology, everyone's friend, we have teachers coming back. So we will have the board, we will have a board meeting before all the teachers actually return. And at that next board meeting, I'm very excited, I want to bring forward a large group, all the, all the new people that we've hired, our, our new leaders, our new principals, assistant principals, and central office leadership staff, so that you might be able to be introduced to them formally. So we're going to kick off that event with introductions. But earlier today, we were welcomed, we welcomed Dr. Jeffrey Walker, the new Assistant Superintendent for Supporting Services, and, and we've been talking a great deal about the work that's ongoing, fantastic work with fantastic staff to get everything ready for the open of school. So, kids, read your summer assignments. You only have a few weeks left, and time slips quickly by, so.
All right, recognitions and public comment. None? Okay. Sorry to make you run, Sandra. The consent agenda, I'm seeking approval for the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And next, we have the Proposed Special Education Staffing Plan, Ms. Melissa Charbonneau.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On July 8th, I presented to you the Special Ed Staffing Plan. Since that time, it was presented to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Special Education. It was posted on their website. I have received two comments. One is from the Vice Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee, which made requests, she had four different requests. Two of them aren't really related to special education, one was related to transportation. The other one was related to a request for family advocate trainers to come and present to both the KC and to staff. I have responded, asking for any specific family advocate, any specific issues, and have shared with her that, you know, we'll be happy, it's on the agenda for the August KC meeting, we can follow up with that, if there's any specific consultant she's interested in, and we would, of course, be happy to address that, either through Partners for Success, which is the avenue in which we do parent education. Does the specific to special education was she had requested that additional staff be added to each school to address interventions. And my response was that each of our elementary schools is staffed with at least one instructional resource teacher. The instructional resource teachers are intervention specialists who provide both direct intervention services to both staff and students. And these individuals also work collaboratively with our special education teachers to support the specially designed instruction for children with disabilities. And we'll be following up if she has any additional questions with that. The second comment came from Parents Place of Maryland, and that was an email that was sent to me that was, her words were, "I'm disappointed to learn that 50% of medical assistance reimbursement funds that are generated are rolled into the general fund, and not that 100% of those come directly to special ed." My response to that is that the 50% that go into the general fund also have an indirect support to all children, but it also is a support to children with disabilities. And then the other 50%, which is a budget, that's a line item budget that's allocated directly for just children with disabilities. I believe this is a state, you know, I can follow up with our budget and finance, but I, I believe that's a state mandate, the way those are set up. I don't think we have any flexibility on how those funds are divided up. I mean, that comes from MSD-E. So based on that, I've made no changes to the plan as it was submitted, and, and requesting today approval, your approval of the plan.
Ms. Sarita, do you have any questions?
Oh, no questions.
Mrs. Crosby?
No. Thank you.
Mrs. Weaver?
Yes. Okay, so the 50% that was asked, I had seen that, is that what you're referring to on the, the one occupational therapist, the camp, the Parks and Rec partnership? I don't have page numbers on these, it's like...
On how medical assistance funds are allocated?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. And then also, I know that we have the evaluation of plan effectiveness. What, when you do your evaluation, okay, where is the information from that from last year's evaluation? Do you have a, like, the statistics on, I don't, you know, you know, like, how you've made, you know, like, about your funds being allocated, you know, how you've made out with your priority areas, about the elementary teachers, you know, to support that you're still having the general education enrollment with an average of one special education teacher for every 200 general education students enrolled in K through 5. So do you have statistics to support that you will keep at 100 to 200, when you go back and evaluate last year's?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
How did you evaluate last year's?
I evaluate each year, I took, I take the total enrollment each year. We began doing that in March. I also get information from Supporting Services on what the projected enrollments will be. And that's, at that point, that's when we make the determination if staff needs to be moved, so then I would be working with principals. Sometimes, an enrollment might drop, for instance, if we're redistricting, and it may, you know, drop below the 200. I'm also working with those administrators and with Supporting Services, because if the projected enrollment, because when we project down enrollment two or three years, if it's going to go back up, then I generally make the decision not to move staff around to maintain consistency, to maintain that support, and, because a good part of this is team building. So there's never a guarantee if I move a teacher to school A, and then next year, their enrollment goes up, and I need to move another staff, there's no, I'm not going to pull that teacher then, so it upsets the team, and...
Well, I guess what I'm looking for, and it's not just that, it's, it's basically on your overall plan, that you, you have, where you've gone back and evaluated, not just sitting at the table verbally and speaking about it, but actually have compiled information to say, this is how our plan worked this past year, and this is why we are moving forward with doing it this way in the future.
And maybe evaluation, maybe that's where our, the connotation is different. The evaluation of the plan is how I am allocating federal funds. So that comes through an audit, when we are monitored on how federal funds are spent, the determination, and we just completed one last week, and a very comprehensive audit that came down, and I'm happy to say, happy to report to you all, that the new chairman of the team, or the lead member of the team, is a real accountant, not a teacher who happened to be interested, and, which is often what happens in education, we move into different roles. MSD-E now has a real accountant who is running those audits. And he, after the end, this has been going on for, since March, I want to give a shout out at this, I'll take this opportunity to a big shout out to Budget and Finance for pulling the documents, getting to the team ahead of time. They spent one day, we spent all morning together going through a rubric on how we spend fun, how we spend funds. And then in the afternoon, they go through our documentation. At the closeout, Mr. Richardson said that this was the fifth one that he had done in the state, they do everybody, and that it was the cleanest, best audit. So thank you very much to Mr. Jamie Guy for pulling all that together, and then to the staff, because it has a lot to do with process and procedures. And of course, the biggest part of our federal funds is on salaries, and they take a very close look at, one of the things they were looking at was the proposed staffing plan. So I think that's the part of, that's how it's evaluated, the procedure is what's outlined on the plan, on how the decisions are made to allocate staff.
Okay, this is improvement planning includes not only the staffing planning, but also identified outcomes and strategies that are most likely to result in systematic changes and improvement result, improved results. So that's where I'm looking at.
Okay, and those are also...
Identify common strategies. You know, just, I, I really...
Sure. Those are reported to, in our grants, in the federal, in the local application, a portion of that is called flexible funding. It's not very much money. That's the piece that the state tells us what it has to be spent on. A portion of that must be spent on family engagement, the family, they define family engagement as partners for success. So we submit a plan for that. A plan must be spent on supporting a Citizens Advisory Committee. There's funds allocated for that. We submit a plan that tells how we're going to use that funds. The third piece is general, is, there's a third piece, it's for transition services. We use that to supplement and support the Gateway to Independence program as our major transition activity. And then fourth piece is on academics. Last year, we spent that money, we braided it with Title I funds to do the ERLA initiative in our Title I schools. There wasn't enough to go to all of the schools. I used flexible funding to do the same thing at Green Holling. So the evaluation of that, then, is the reporting that we do at the close of the grant. So we have to submit to the state as a closeout, the results of those initiatives. So that's reported each year in our closeout.
Now, I went back to 2008, which is the earliest that I could find on the board docs. And I know back in then, you were still looking for, like, three speech and language pathologists, and then, like, you couldn't fill the positions, and then the following year, same, same thing. Then after that, it's basically, you know, you just have staffing for speech and language pathologists, you know, it seemed like the, wait a minute, despite efforts to ensure all positions were filled, a vacancy may occur, and it most likely occurs with OTPT and speech and language. And I know that you contracted services out, I'm glad that you put that on the information about your total cost. In the past, you just had a total cost of how much your budget was. Were those contracted services included in the total cost of your budget in the past? I know you have it broken down here for us this year, but when going back on the old ones, it was not broken out, so I couldn't tell.
No, it was included the same way. What I did this year was, I was trying to model portions of how the budget was presented and the changes in the budget this year, so that you had a more discreet idea specifically where they were, and how it was broken out. It's the same way, I've always, it's the same process, yeah.
Okay. And then, when, do you actively, I want to say advertise for speech and language, OT and PT continually?
We do, constantly. It's a national...
Because I didn't see anything in there, and I went, I've been looking, you know, like, one HR. So I don't know, you know, how do you...
We have three vacancies that have been there, that have been on the availability for years. It's a national problem.
Do they actively go out and try to recruit like they do with teachers, try to...
Yes, we actually send members from the Department of Special Education to PERC, which is a huge job fair in Pittsburgh. It's a catchment area for a lot of schools in Pennsylvania and Ohio. We also send members of the department to Towson University, which has an excellent deaf education, special education program. And then we have... And then we have, um, department members who go to the University of West Virginia, which has, um, a nationally recognized program for speech pathology.
And how do they make out trying to recruit?
We've not been successful.
Is there any strategies that you're, that you would change trying to recruit some people?
The, um, the concern or the, the issue is, most speech pathologists, myself, uh, Ms. Fowler was trained. Our background is a clinical background. And, um, about nineteen sixty-nine, sixty-eight is when school systems began to employ speech pathologists. It was with ninety-four, one forty-two when we changed the special ed law. At that point, some of us went into school systems primarily, I can't speak for Mrs. Fowler, but for myself, um, because I had a young family and the calendar worked well. And, um, we don't see that so much with, um, related service providers anymore. They're, they're a high commodity, they can get paid more in a clinical practice than they can for a public school. The other thing is, and I have spoken to schools myself about this, um, that in the colleges and universities, I don't know why their career centers encourage related service providers to sign up with an agency. I think, one, it guarantees them a job. I know what they're doing. They're saying, if I have an agency, I'm going to get paid. When I graduate, I will have employment. But they're in such, um, high demand in school systems. Most of those people are going to get a job anyway. But a lot of them are being advised. And that's what we hear from the young therapists that we're hiring. I mean, I ask the question all the time, why, why'd you go with, you know, an agency instead of just working through the schools? And that's their response. I wanted to make sure I had a job. So part of that is work that we're doing with the college, the colleges that are preparing them. But the other challenge is, I think the biggest challenge is the training is a clinical model, and an educational model is very different from a clinical model.
And, let's see, um... Okay, um... The, uh, I was looking at the pass-through, uh, the, uh, federal...
That's federal funds, right.
Okay, because I saw down here where it had pass-through, but are all these other services also pass-through, um, contracted out? I only saw the, uh, teacher of the visually impaired, and then the point six for orientation and mobility.
Um, it was contracted out this year because we were unable to fill the position. Those are locally funded positions, that's part of, um, a locally funded position. However, we were unable to, vision teachers are harder to find than speech pathologists. Um, there's fewer programs nationally. And orientation and mobility is the state of Maryland, the entire state. M S D E has told me has three O and M certified individuals. And yet, the General Assembly mandated this year that every student with a vision impairment must have an O and M evaluation, an assessment. So, um, that's been, uh, continues to be a real challenge, so... We have, for this school year, we have actually been fortunate enough to locate an F T E and sent a recommendation in yesterday, uh, for the vision teacher. We are still looking and negotiating with O and M services.
Okay, so you're looking to turn that into, well, an F T E and have them hired specifically for us, then, is that correct?
I won't be able to for O and M, we don't have enough...
No, but I'm talking about for the visually impaired.
I have, I have.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because I'd like to, for me, I would like to see it more going towards F T Es and not the, running out there every year trying to get contracted services and hoping that they... They come. Um, another question I have is about the, um, the clinical social worker, that's the point nine for thirty-eight weeks, that, okay. Um, and this has been, I think they've been contracted for, like, what, seven years now? Okay. Have you looked into an F T E for this person? Because it seems like this is, once again, something that is continual. You're forecasting that you're going to need this next year, instead of this contracting out year after year for the same person?
Well, it becomes a budgetary constraint. I have a finite number of positions in the local budget. And when I E Ps require additional services, the way we provide those services is through, um, you know, additional supporting funding. So there is not a position in the local budget. So there's a finite number of dollars. We look at the number of positions that we can fill with that. And then we must supplement through these other funding sources.
Okay, well, what I'm looking at is, you're still spending the money, okay? And I would think that you would be able to, I guess you would say, build a case. This is, you know, we've had the same person for the last seven years. This is how much it's cost, costing us. We could do this for less. Um, we, you know, when you really look at it, um, and have a person that is more embedded in the school system and has, uh, you know, I guess more input and things like that. So I just don't, I guess my thought is, is, and your, and your future forecast is also looking at, okay, this person, you know, it's, you said Charles County was a model for this, you know, how you are implementing. So if you can go to evidence-based and you go back for the last seven years and say, I've done this for the last seven years, this is how much it costs us, and you can present a case of how it would cost much less if we had an F T E, then...
I'll be happy to add that into our request for positions for next year. We had added in psychologists this year and weren't able to complete all of those. Psychologists can deliver the service as well. So, I, thanks, you will be my voice, my endorsement next year when I request additional positions. So we can certainly add that in. It just becomes a financial constraint in how to provide those services.
Yeah, but I'm just seeing that you're spending just as much or more for someone that is being contracted out.
Okay.
And I just, you know, and it's not even a nine month, it's not even a full-time, so...
Well, it is full-time, it's all the time that the students are here.
It says point nine, so that's thirty-six hours.
Well, and there's also a point one, so it's a five-day-a-week job.
Right, I realize that, but I'm looking at the point nine. And I just, even, even for a point nine, uh, could cost a lot less with, um, being an F T E, and that's including all their benefits. Okay, so that's where I just, I would like to see...
Thank you, I'll be sure to add that into the request as we build the seventeen budget, sure.
Right, and like I said, I just think that, you know, if you have things that are happening year after year after year, and that's why I was asking for, about the evaluation, do you have all your documentation and your statistics and everything to support? Okay, this is, this is how we've done, these are the issues we're having, this is what, how we need to change it to move forward, to go back to that and say, this is why we need these F T Es. And this is how it would save us money, because I really think it would.
It's part of the budget process. When we look at, again, the budget that is, um, just like you all do, this is the budget we get from the commissioners, and then you work to make that budget work. I do the same thing with staffing.
You're still spending the money, so, you know, because you have to have these services, so you've contracted them out, so you're still spending it.
Well, it's different pots. Some is coming out of local money, some is coming out of medical assistance money, some is coming out of federal funds. And then within the federal funds, it's designated into, um, preschool threes and fours, preschool fours and fives, and then six to twenty-one. So there's different categories that you can only put that money into.
But that's where I think that the evaluation of what had, what your past year would, uh, be beneficial in moving forward. Um, because I don't, to me, I don't see really how you've evaluated and kind of like, kind of like a summary of the evaluations last, you know, last year in the past, whatever. And this is what we're using to support moving forward.
Well, the evaluation is based on how the positions are filled and were we able to fill the positions and provide the services.
Right, so, and, and with that, that's what I'm saying, is it would be nice to have a little summary here to say, you know, these were the, uh, the services that we had a difficult time providing, or, you know, whatever, or we had enough people staffing for this. It just said, I don't see that there's any summary, you know, you don't, I mean, I'd like to see the, you know, the entire evaluation, but here, you know, just at least putting in the plan, kind of, uh, the evaluation of how you, you believe you did fare last year and how you were changing it this year to move forward.
Okay. Okay. And I think that's my questions.
I'm just going to add one thing on, on the F T Es for the, for the, I am just, from sitting in all of the county commissioner work sessions, and every time, and Ms. McCourt and Mr. Smith can attest to this, that we added an F T E, that is what they focused on.
Right.
So it's, and because that will then go into maintenance of effort, which they are very cognizant of. So, um, that, that could be some of the, you know, of the budget reasoning, not that it is accurate or appropriate, but that...
No, I've, I've been there, so I understand how the whole thing works. But if you have documentation to support your argument...
Right, right, point is very well taken. And, but I'm, I'm sure that, you know, every time we added an F T E, they're like, oh, there's two. You're adding two more, you know, two more people and moving that bucket into maintenance of effort, which was, you know, another whole separate conversation, so...
The benefit of a contract is it's executed annually and can be terminated within the confines of the contract. So it is, especially with special ed, where there are vagaries of funding from year to year, and I E P hour needs and things like that do change with the children as they enter and leave our system. The onboarding of an actual F T E then obligates us to put them in an association to pay full benefits, to increase their pay every single year as we negotiate. So there is, there's going to be a lot of conversation as we build the two thousand and seventeen budget, because we have operated, um, very fiscally, prudently, um, to keep F T E counts at a certain level. Um, and we'll be having the same conversation with Abacus employees, um, as, as we go through it. These are people that we have working for us who come back and work for us every single year. And, um, it is a great conversation to have publicly as to whether or not we want to contract out with these people or we want to bring them in as a, an F T E within the system. I know Ms. Morris is here representing SEASMIC. Um, you know, there's a great deal of benefit to bringing people in, to, to folding them into our family and having them in our association. There is a long-term commitment and cost to doing exactly that, and, um, we're going to have to balance that disposition. Ms. Charbonne, I have to say, as always, I love when you present, it is always an education to me. It has been an education to me over the last two years in working very closely with you on how you coordinate these multiple, um, funding streams, all that have an incredible amount of, of auditing on the background. And this is, this is a pot of money, but it can only be used here, and this has to be used here, and this has to be used here. Um, I have seen your spreadsheets, I have seen all of the, the contortions that we go through to deliver a service to kids, and I just, I just thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I, we jumped over. Mrs. Allen, do you have that?
I'm, I'm, I'm working my back, so I...
Oh, that's, that's fine.
I'm tracking in mine.
That's fine. The, you know, the other issue is that those pass-through funds are not local funds.
No.
So, um, yes, we're expending them, but since they're not local dollars, it's not as though we're, um, we have local dollars to hire them as an F T E versus a contracted position. And, and that's the other piece for me. Um, and this is more of a federal report regarding special education, how we're using those federal dollars, than it is necessarily a audit, you know, a, um, here's, here's how special education is handled in St. Mary's County public schools and, um, for, you know, parents and for, um, for, for others to, to read. It is, it is a, an accountability report that's pro forma in, in large measure. The, we have seen over the years the documentation of, um, how this is utilized. And, and part of that documentation and accountability, um, I would say, is the, um, uh, the testing that goes on and, and observing those students to make sure that, that they are demonstrating what they've learned through the various state accountability measures. It is a, um, as you call it, a braided approach. And, uh, I, I think that's a very apt expression. Thank you for providing this. I know that, that over many years, um, it is difficult to hire as F T Es, even when we have the dollars to do so, it is difficult to find these people because they're in high demand, it's critical needs areas, and, um, and St. Mary's County is a destination, it is not a pass-through. It's not like living in Howard County and saying, I can work in Montgomery, I can work in Frederick, I can work in Howard, and if I tire of this one, I can go to that one. If you're coming here, you're coming here.
You're committed.
Yes. Um, and, and sometimes the folks who come here and work for us for a while do so because they have a spouse that is transferred here through the military, and that's a, you know, an assignment of a certain duration. And when their spouse is transferred, off they go.
Off they go.
So, um, we're grateful to have them while they're here.
Yeah.
And sorry to see them go. But the most important piece is that services that are prescribed are, are, um, offered to students, made available, and whether they are done so through our F T Es or whether that happens through contracted services. So, that's the important part. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Charbonne. I think you've given us a very good overview of the challenges that you face, uh, in getting people to come in, that, uh, special education students' needs change as students come in and students leave. And you need that flexibility to be able to call in the people that you need for the students at that particular time, because it changes every year what you need. So, thank you very much, you have a tough job, I think you're doing a wonderful job. There are people around the state of Maryland that talk about our special education program, how it is an excellent program. And there are people who want to move here because of the quality of our special education program. So thank you for what you're doing and your, um, your leadership team, uh, that helped you to do a wonderful job to provide for the needs of the students, and that's the key. All the students' needs get met. And I can say that our students, uh, our special needs students' needs are getting met in St. Mary's County public schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, do I have a motion for this action item, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the special ed, special education staffing plan for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year as presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Steve Witten, flooring services at various school sites.
Good morning, how are you today?
We are good, how are you?
Good.
I don't use this all. So today I'm here looking for your approval to continue to utilize a Charles County Public Schools contract for flooring and tiling services, with currently the contract is awarded to Southern Maryland Flooring Company in White Plains, Maryland. The services were awarded in June seventeenth of two thousand eleven with four one-year renewals, as four one-year renewals have been executed. The contract is good until June of two thousand sixteen. Every other year in the capital budget, we receive fifty thousand dollars for flooring, and this is, happens to be one of those years we have flooring money. In the operating budget, we typically budget about fifteen, depending on the budget year, fifteen to twenty thousand in operating budget to take care of things as they progress. So every other year, we, we try to take care of as much carpet as we can. In the years we don't have capital funds, we have some set aside to do smaller projects. So I'm looking for your approval to do, to continue to use this contract to a maximum value of sixty-five thousand, which is the fifty thousand of capital funds plus the fifteen thousand of operating funds. This is currently, although we have multiple projects identified, at the time I put together the, the board agenda item, in order to finish the majority of the ones we need to get done this summer, these are the only ones we actually had quotes and prices on, and this totals, which you, as in front of you, only totals thirty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. But as the year goes on, we'll do more at the Christmas break, and then again, we'll do some at the Easter break, and, and as the year goes on. The largest one up here you'll see is Hollywood Elementary School, that has the original carpet that was installed when it was renovated, or actually built. And this portion, we've already done one of the corridors a couple of years back, this portion will remove the carpet and install flooring tile, and all the court, and the rest, the balance of the corridors, and the classroom house lobbies, if you're not familiar with Hollywood Elementary, the way it's built, it has classrooms that surround what is best described as a lobby area. And then hopefully, with the next funding allocation, we'll do the rest of the classrooms at Hollywood. So, any questions?
Ms. Lee, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, you have the different warranties listed here, okay. What is, for the insulation warranty, is that, you know, so that they clean up, or just how it's placed?
That it's installed correctly. If the adhesive is the wrong adhesive in the carpet, or the tile, and most of this work, the tile fails, the product fails because of installation problems. It can vary. It can, installation warranties cover a variety of issues, it doesn't cover use of the carpet, but the tile was cut incorrectly, the adhesive was incorrect, the prep of the floor underneath was incorrect, a lot of these areas we're removing, ninety percent of this work, I apologize for taking it down, ninety percent of this work is removing, is removing carpet and replacing it with flooring tile. The advantage of installing carpet originally on concrete surfaces is that it hides imperfections. So we also, in these, in, in these prices that exist here, is the carpet and the tile installer, the carpet remover in this case, is also contracted to remove the imperfections from the subfloor underneath of the carpet, so that the tile lays flat. If they lay the tile incorrectly and end up waxing it, that's usually when the waves will show up in the floor, they have to come back and redo it. So those, those sort of problems occur during installation.
Okay, and did you put out any bids to other local companies?
We don't constrain our bids to local companies. We did, we, we didn't structure this bid. It was offered, I, I don't know if it was offered through eMarketplace, but I would assume it would be, which would be every company that signs up to get those bid results. This was, this is a, we're writing a Charles County contract in this instance.
Right, so did you put any bids out there, or however, you know, put out saying we would like people to bid for these, for this? Did you put any out there?
No, ma'am, no, no. St. Mary's County Public Schools did not. We, we, we had two years ago, and we were advised by the Department of Procurement within the school system that there was an existing contract that we could probably better be served utilizing.
Okay. Because I guess I'm looking at, if you didn't put something out there, is this the best price that you could get if you haven't put anything else out there?
I, I can't answer that question. This is the best price that was returned on a publicly offered bid through Charles County.
Okay, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
You already anticipated all the questions I was going to ask, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Same here, very nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It does occur to me, Mr. Smith, that at some point it might be helpful for the board to be refreshed on exactly what eMarketplace is, how that works, and the variety of options that are available to the school system in terms of putting things out for bid, and how all of that works. Because I, I think that's a consistent question that I hear, and I think that we could all use a refresher on that.
That would be fantastic. I see Ms. McCourt nodding her head, and we will bring that back to you for an information session.
Well, at least if it meets with everyone else's approval. I mean, certainly, I'm not trying to...
I don't know.
Say this, but i- if that is, would be of interest to the board, I would put that out as a suggestion.
The procurement process on all items, and the way in which we go forward finding the best price, the best vendor, the best installer, it'd be great to have staff come forward and explain that, and then we can also discuss and highlight the work that they do on behalf of kids. It's work that often happens behind doors that you don't necessarily know.
Right, and I know that, that MAB had partnered with the National School Board Association with buy boards in order to offer different procurement options, and MAB has recently severed that partnership because it was not working out in the way it had been touted, and, and there are so many other options available to school systems, it was not being utilized, so.
We can bring it back.
I mean, on the same, on the flooring? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to ensure that we are getting the best for our money, so...
Sure.
You know, that's why I'm asking about the other bids, not just to keep piggybacking on other people. So that's, that's why I'm asking, because I could, you know, for me, I'd like to see us, you know, place some bids out there, and if they don't come back as, as, you know, you know, competitive, or, you know, we also want quality work, so we're going to be looking at that, but I want to, I want to ensure that we're looking at everything.
Sure, absolutely, and that's why I asked about the eMarketplace, because I think that would help us.
May I add something? Just, maybe it'll help. When I said that we put bids out two and three years ago, and we do that internally in the Department of Maintenance when it's under twenty-five thousand, the contractor that won at that point was Southern Maryland Carpet, was the same contractor. And then we went to procurement to look to redo it, knowing that a, a year was coming with capital money, which would have been a purchase over twenty-five thousand. They were able to locate a contract with Southern Maryland Floor that was already in place and had already been publicly bid. But I, and, and this, this was awarded in two thousand eleven, and although I don't have all the renewals in front of me, I did review them about a week and a half ago, and I don't recall a request for increase from two thousand eleven to today on the prices that were submitted in two thousand eleven. I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm fairly confident that we, we did get good prices, whether we got the best possible price or not, I...
Well, I just know that the, the lady, and I don't recall her name right now, that did the, the foreign language books, she said that they actually found a better company due to them being forced to go out to get bids, because they were looking at one particular company, and then when this other company came in, they were like, oh, one, it's less expensive, we're getting more for money, and it's a better product, so, okay?
I understand completely, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion on this action item, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the use of the existing Charles County Public School flooring contract, ITB FCTS dash ten eleven for flooring services as stated, as stated, and additionally approve the continued use of this contract to a maximum of sixty-five thousand dollars until June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, to address other smaller flooring projects as they arise.
Do I have a second?
I second, I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Witten.
All right. Our next regular board meeting is on Wednesday, July twelfth, two thousand fifteen, at nine a.m., and for those counting, that's a mere seven days prior to the start of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. So, and with that, we are adjourned.